Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the slight delay. We had some technical difficulties. I'd like to call to order the May 12th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. We're going to start with a superintendent's report, which is the 2020-2021 budget presentation. Dr. Glass?
Thank you and good evening, everybody. We're going to focus on our budget presentation, and I'm going to ask if our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Lisa Sanfilippo, can begin pulling up and sharing with you the PowerPoint presentation. I think you'll find that helpful. I'm going to ask that she go through this presentation, particularly the first few slides, and then we'll be sort of taking turns walking you through different pieces of it. It's been an unusual budget season, and you're going to find out a little bit. You already know a little bit about why, but we'll talk some more about that as we go. Lisa, are you ready?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, done, okay. Okay, so our first slide is the calculation of the property tax cap. So we start with our actual tax levy for this year, and we are allowed to grow that by our tax-based growth factor, which is determined by the state based on assessments in the district. Then we have to back out our capital exemptions from this current school year. So we have our capital tax levy and our transfer to capital of 1.5 million. At that point, then, we are allowed to add our allowable levy growth factor, which is 1.81%, or the CPI. That's what everyone refers to as the tax cap, but as you'll see, that's not actually what our cap ends up being. Then to that number, we add our capital tax levy for the 2021 school year, which includes all our debt service on our capital debt minus any building aid that we receive from the state. And again, we are planning on a transfer to capital of another 1.5 million for next year. And that brings us down to our total levy, which we're allowed to levy for the 2021 school year, and that is a 1.78 increase over the current school year. And that is what is considered our tax cap. So the next slide shows the estimated tax rate impact of that tax levy increase. And if we start with a 1920 school tax bill, and you could see the various assessed values across the top. The average in the Eastchester School District is $8,900 for home in Eastchester. So when we apply that increase, we would come to an annual projected increase of $241 for a school tax bill. And just to note that this does not include any star exemptions, and it also assumes that there's no change in assessed value total and just so that we can truly see the impact of this tax levy increase on your tax bill. Now, your tax bill will no doubt be impacted by any changes in overall assessed value, but that doesn't change what this impact would be to your tax rate. So the next slide is where we are in terms of estimated revenue for the 2021 school year right now. And we anticipate that this is going to change. Some of the items that were taking a big hit for next year are highlighted in yellow here, and we'll go through those a little more in detail on the next slide. So one of our big revenue boosts last year was the increase in the county sales tax rate, which we were very excited about. But now we believe that, in light of the circumstances, that our sales tax revenue is probably not going to be what we were hoping it would be. So we were originally projecting 1.6 million in sales tax revenue for next year. We're taking that down right now by $300,000. So we're showing 1.3 million in sales tax revenue. Although we did receive our first quarter for this year, and it did remain unchanged, which was positive. We were anticipating something less, but understanding that it was not reflective of what's going on right now. It was only through March 31st. Interest and earnings in the short term, we are, S&amp;P interest is going to remain pretty close to zero for probably at least half of next school year. While we don't anticipate it's going to be at zero for the entire school year, that number's been taken down quite a bit. In terms of state aid, the state is giving us a budget revision. So we hear on Friday, on May 15th, and this is going to be based on April revenues for the state as of April 30th. So we will likely see some sort of reduction in state aid on Friday. So we're waiting to see what that number's going to be. However, we, oh, let me, I'm sorry. We are anticipating that any revenue shortfall that we may incur for next year will be, we'll be able to cover that with surplus funds that we generated this year based on the current year closure. Obviously, we have, we're going to put that money into our fund balance and carry it over to next year. So this is, this slide represents our state aid, and we just thought it might be helpful to kind of see the components of state aid and how they may be impacted going forward. So the first column shows the 1819 actual. That's the components of state aid that we actually received last year. As of April 1st, when the state budget was adopted, the blue column shows what we're projecting for this current school year, and the green column shows what was passed, what the budget that was enacted for next school year. Both of these columns are subject to change as of Friday. Not only are we anticipating perhaps that 2021 will be impacted, but it is possible that the 1920 school year will also be impacted. We may have to take a reduction in this school year.
Oh, that's interesting.
I've got a question. Why is, why is that a negative there under the, why is there a pandemic adjustment negative? If we're getting additional monies?
So the governor, when, when they enacted the budget, at that point, if you see the bottom line, federal cares restoration.
Yeah.
Basically, he was saying the money, at that point, they had passed the Federal Cares Restoration Act. So that money is what's making us whole. He made, he took this pandemic adjustment and has replaced it with the federal money.
So you mean, you're telling me that he turned around and he said, he asked the federal government for help. When they gave the help, he lowered the state help? The equal, an equal amount?
Yes.
Yes.
That's ridiculous.
What do you think?
How can you back on that television and, you know, ask the federal government? Does that mean if the federal government gives us more help, we're going to lose more aid?
Yeah.
Well.
Exactly what it means.
Right, so if he cuts, let's say, a million dollars from us, his expectation is that the federal government will restore that million dollars. So in no instance, I don't believe, are we going to get more than this. I think we're just looking to be kept whole at this point.
And he's going to say, he's going to say, cut 20%, and if he gets it back from the feds, he'll give you the 20% of the federal money.
Correct.
And this guy, this guy's a rising star. I don't understand it.
You watch his press conferences. He comes across well.
I don't know. I used to work in Manhattan when the guy in the corner used to play three-card Monte.
It's the same like the lottery money. They give it in one hand and they take it from the other. It's no different. I mean, it's just moving money around.
All right. Let's.
You know, they're.
I think the, one of the benefits of showing this slide is, you know, our families have been working very hard to advocate that we get an increase in foundation aid because we've been harmed, millions and millions of dollars over the years, and not received monies promised. And despite all the lobbying efforts, you know, we wanted people to transparently see that not only have we not moved up, but, you know, through this crisis of, it looks like we're having, we'll be lucky to be made whole even with the CARES Act money.
But the upside to that, right, is that 20% of a smaller number is a smaller loss than the addition of more. I mean, if you have to, you know, look at it in a perverse fashion, that's, I guess, the upside.
Right.
Does anyone have an issue if we make the slide, say, on the second line, NYS pandemic adjustment? So it's very clear that the state is cutting the same amount, that the federal.
The whole thing is state aid. Why do you need to point it out? I mean, it's.
Well, the federal cares restoration is not state aid.
And that's why it says federal.
That's federal aid, and it says federal.
But all the other things are state. Why would you point one out versus the rest of them?
Because I would like people to see that it's the same money being taken away that the feds are giving us. I think it's clearer.
We can.
Because the slide says state aid, but the last line is federal aid.
It's possible.
Okay.
You know, just NYS pandemic adjustment.
Okay.
You know?
It's all, it's all NYS adjustments, but okay.
Okay. So the estimated expenditures for 2021. Swiss Chip announced last week that they'd be, sorry, that they would be, they were originally projecting a 3.7% rate increase, and they decided to reduce that to a 1.7% rate increase for active employees for next year. So this will save the district approximately $150,000 for next year, which is great, we could use it. The district also extended the ETA's retirement incentive, and as a result, we received three additional teachers retiring, and that's generating approximately $250,000 in additional savings, which is also great, we will need that.
How, how do you get to that from three teachers? Or is that from all of the retirements? Because three teachers, the savings between what you pay for new teachers versus the old teachers, it's not 80,000, 70-something thousand a teacher difference, is it?
Sure is. They're at the top of the scale.
Is it really? Wow. Okay.
And then you add TRS and FICA on top of that, and yeah, that's where we are.
Okay, all right, wow.
Okay, so also included in the budget are some small staffing increases, and we also may reallocate some of our existing staff to provide some better support. Right now, we're looking to take a 10-month nurse and make it a 12-month position. We are already paying per diem, one of our current nurses, to cover, to provide us with some recovery. So the net increase, we're estimating at approximately $4,000. We are including a 0.2 increase in special education at the high school. That's approximately a $17,000 increase. And we put as a placeholder in the budget for security enhancements for next year. It's a $65,000 increase. Not exactly sure we will be using that money at this point, but it could be in a variety of different ways. But we just needed a placeholder in the budget for that for next year. Should anything change positively, which is unlikely, but the following are some of the items that were under consideration until the pandemic hit. We were looking at a 1.0 ENL to be shared between Anne Hutch and Greenville. That would be an add of about $95,000. We were looking at a 1.0 technology integration specialist district-wide. That would be about $101,000. A 1.0 technology increase split between Anne Hutch and Greenville. That's also a $95,000 increase. And a 0.1 music at the middle school increase for about $7,000. So potential capital projects we're looking at for next year. We are including $1.5 million in the transfer to capital line. We are looking to do roof replacement at the high school and middle school. We have a good number of roofs there that haven't been replaced in a long time and are currently leaking over the middle school gym, for example. And if there are any funds left over, we would use that to address other projects identified in our five-year capital plan. So the next steps, what we're waiting for is Friday. We are, we have been told that we will receive the budget revision on Friday. Therefore, we have scheduled our budget adoption to be on Tuesday, May 19th, where we can make any adjustments if necessary after the May 15 budget revision. And our budget, public budget hearing is scheduled for May 27th at 8:00 p.m., another virtual meeting. The budget vote and trustee election is by executive order this year to be moved to June 9th. It's by 100% absentee ballot only, no in-person polling locations. However, we will set up a drop box in front of the district office. If people do not feel comfortable or if there's not enough time to put their, their vote in the mail, they may come by the district office and place it in a drop box that we'll have out front. Ballots must be received by 5:00 p.m. on June 9th to be counted. We, it doesn't matter if they come in the next day, they were postmarked. They have to be in our hands by 5:00 p.m. on June 9th. So that's it.
Will this PowerPoint be put up on the district website?
Yes. It's, right now, it's up on board docs, so people can access it there, but we will put it on the website as well.
Great, thank you. And just a note about the security enhancements that, that you're sort of looking into that right now and working with Alteris to sort of identify the areas of greatest need, correct? And that's why it's.
Correct. Since, yes, we've been, we've pulled together a, an emergency management team across the district for the first time, really unifying all of the building level teams and looking at a list of prioritized action items. And as part of that, we were doing a review, having Alteris do a review of current staffing and making, and, and just looking at the overall system. And we're looking in very short order for them to make some recommendations as to whether we have, you know, the right levels of staffing and, and what might need to be done or other, other things that could be helpful that we're not currently doing. So it's, we're looking for those recommendations from our professionals, and they will guide the use of that placeholder that we have there.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Lisa's been terrific navigating this. She stays really well-connected politically and really well-connected to colleagues in the region. And because of that, whenever we get information that is, it's been, I mean, information in this arena has been hitting us hard and fast, just coming like, you know, daily and weekly, you know, through executive orders or through, you know, channels at the state level filtering down through our legislators and so forth. And she's able to get to the, to the heart of the matter and really help us all be able to make good decisions in real time. So really appreciate Lisa's great attention to detail, and this has been a challenging season. So thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Great, okay. Moving on, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the minutes of the April 21st, 2020 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you need a second or?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do need a second. Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. It's unanimous vote. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
A second. Thanks, Vito. Discussion, questions?
I got a question. I'm going to ask that we could vote on the retirement incentive separately, because I'm not in favor of that, never are. I think the people would retire anyway, we're just giving money away.
Well, so we're not voting on an incentive. We are, we're just voting on approving their retirement.
Yeah. Just pull it out. I, I'll second his motion to pull it out and vote on it separately.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor of voting on the retirements of the personnel agenda separately?
Oh, you don't, you don't have to vote on that.
We don't? Okay.
Now, we'll just vote on.
You do that in the discussion.
All right, so all in favor of voting on the personnel agenda minus the retirements?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, passed unanimously. Now, all in favor of voting on the retirements that are included in the personnel agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
I got a question there. Well, we voted, I'll vote to accept the retirements. I just didn't want to vote on the retirement incentive. You follow? I don't have a problem with the people retiring.
The memorandum of agreement.
We have a.
Yeah, it's the MOA. That's what I have.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're voting on the MOA now. We already voted.
All right, all in favor of voting on the MOA for the retirement incentive?
Aye.
Do I need to go through and get everybody's vote? All in favor?
No, I mean, I think the only one nay is Vito.
I'm a nay. Two, I'm a nay.
I only saw three hands go up. This could be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Two.
Two opposed, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct, Steve and I.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. Sorry for the confusion. Unlike, since we had already, I thought, voted on retirements in January, but, okay. Be resolved, moving on, that the Board of Education hereby approves the placements as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Education. I'm going to go through, through eight. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the student transportation agreement with first student and that the Assistant Superintendent of Business is authorized to execute the agreement on its behalf. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves budget transfers of $10,000 over for the month of April 2020 as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following health service contracts as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the following warrants as attached? Can I get a second, Tara?
I second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to vote separately on the transportation agreement.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's vote on everything that I just moved except for the transportation agreement, which is 8.1. So we're voting on 7.1, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Okay, now we're voting on the approval of the student transportation agreement, 8.1. Do we need any discussion first?
I'll just say that the reason, the reason, you've already heard it for anybody who else was listening, I don't believe we should be paying anything for services not provided. And I know that we are extending the agreement into next year, but I, I think, I don't think we're getting the value that we're paying for, so I'm going to vote against that.
Okay.
That's it.
So all in favor of 8.1, the transportation agreement?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just one.
One opposed. Thank you. All right, future meeting dates. We have our meeting next Tuesday on May 19th. That will be, it used to be a budget vote and a trustee vote, but that will be when we will approve the budget. We have a meeting also, as mentioned in the presentation, we have our budget hearing coming up on May 27th at 8:00 p.m., and that is, that will be on Zoom as well. There will be an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that one. We're going to have a chat feature. So that's a Wednesday, Wednesday, May 27th, Tuesday, June 9th, and Tuesday, June 23rd. Any comments from the board?
I just have one. Am I unmute? No.
No, go ahead, Sally. I'm just acknowledging you, so everyone knows who's speaking, Sally.
No, just thank you for joining us tonight. To the attendees, it's nice to have people, even though.
Hey.
I do, we do appreciate people coming to these meetings. I do see a lot of names I recognize. I hope everyone is actually doing well, not just the board members and administration, but everyone, all of us. I hope we're all doing well during this time, and thank you for taking the time to join us this evening.
Thanks, Sally. Anyone else? Vito?
I'd like to say the same thing. Our number of attendees has grown to nine this meeting. I'm very impressed by that. So to all those people who are dialing in, thank you for being interested, and stay safe. And we're doing the best we can with these meetings. It is difficult. We'd much rather be face-to-face, but it is what it is. So hopefully, one of these days soon, we'll be able to meet in the auditorium or something like that. But until then, it is what it is.
That's right.
Does I miss?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Did I probably get? How are we going to get our ballots to vote?
How are we going to get our ballots? Is that what you asked?
Yes.
Okay, so the printer, we, we are having the printer produce all 12,900 ballots. They will be sent out with a postage-paid return envelope, and they will be going out a couple of days after you guys adopt the budget on the 27th, I mean, excuse me, the 19th.
May 19th.
The 19th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
So, so can I just, I'm going to jump in here. I'm going to, I'm going to say, obviously, if people have comments or, you know, get joining the meetings, I guess, send them by email to the Board of Ed and to Dr. Glass so he can forward them on to us if it relates to the budget. And just, you know, make sure you get out and vote and get your friends to, to vote as well, because, you know, this may be a difficult budget season, and, and it's always important that whatever the budget is, hopefully, it'll pass and that our parents get out there and vote.
And it's not getting out, it's just opening your mail.
Put it in the mail, but.
So it's easier than ever.
Yes, hopefully, but it may be easier than ever for the opposite vote as well. So just make sure you get it back in time and that the parents get the vote out. You know, it's going to be really important, super critical this year.
I, I have a question, totally different subject. And I know we've, I know we're planning lots of things, but my, my question is about graduation. And my question is, can we give any thought to possibly having a graduation? Maybe homecoming weekend? If we can't call it a graduation, we could call it a mock graduation of some kind so that we could do something for the percentage of kids that do make it home for Thanksgiving weekend? Maybe we could do it on a Friday or a Saturday or something like that? Just a thought.
Yeah, I know that our high school administration's giving a lot of thought to all the possibilities right now. They're leading, you know, certainly looking at their various digital options as primaries, but if you can do something face-to-face a little bit later, secondarily, you know, if you could get everybody together, those are things that they, I know they've considered, so. In some cases, if you can do both something digital and then something live, it's a bonus, right? So I know they're looking at various components, and I don't want to get too far ahead because I'm not so sure Principal Capuano has, you know, communicated all this or made final decisions on all of it, but I can assure you, they're looking at a lot of, a lot of good creative options to try to make sure our seniors have great experience, the best that we can do at this time.
Well, they're going to be unique, that's for sure.
Mm-hmm. Yes, they will always remember their high school graduation, however it is.
Well, we're thinking of you seniors, and I just wanted to acknowledge, since we're talking about the seniors, there is that Facebook page, Adopt a Eastchester High School Senior, and I wanted to give a shout-out to the ma, the parent who is spearheading it, Kristin Sadari. There's a Facebook page, you can adopt a senior, you can give them nice treats and surprises. I noticed that our ETA, the Eastchester Teachers Association, has adopted, as of my last reading, four seniors, and I saw some teachers in pictures out delivering treats today. So thank you to the ETA, thank you to Kristin Sadari for spearheading that and to everyone who's participating. And if you want more information about how to get your senior listed or how to adopt a senior, you know, look on the Facebook page. Look on the, I think the Eastchester, the high school PTA sent out information. Or you can even, you know, email the Board of Ed, and I'll, I'll hook you up with that information if you want to get involved. But thank you to everyone who's doing that. And if you need a mood booster, look to the, look on the Eastchester, look at Adopt an Eastchester Senior on the page on Facebook, and you'll see all the seniors getting their treats and having their spirits lifted in the middle of AP exams, and it's kind of, it's really nice to see. So it's not a graduation, it's not the same, but it's a nice way that the community's getting together. Any other board comments?
I just had a couple of comments. I just wanted to say it's been really, really great to have the Google Meet started to have the Google Meet started with the different teachers. And it's just a nice component for the kids to see their, their home, you know, their classroom teacher as well as the specials. But also the component of the socialization, the kids seeing their friends. There, it just, it just encourages camaraderie. And I just, I encourage all the families to try. I know it's, you know, the days are very busy, but to still try to get onto the Google Meets. I think it'll only enhance your child's experience with, you know, seeing their teachers as well as seeing their friends. And I also just wanted to piggyback on Cheryl. I also encourage regarding the Adopt a Senior program.